Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now we're going to do the continuation of our study session. And this one's going to be Planning Commission Ordinance presented by Corporation Counsel Gary Miyaki. Mr. Miyaki, please go ahead.
Okay. So I sent out a letter by email along with a proposed ordinance. And I just want to highlight a few things without stating everything over. First of all, the task that I was given was to try to prepare an ordinance that put things back the way they were prior to the 2007 ordinance. And that 2007 ordinance was H-0701 with respect to the council and the Planning Commission's relative authority. And if you notice in my letter, I explained, that's what I attempted to do, but it's very difficult to figure out. And the city clerk and I, as a matter of fact, thank you to her and her office for trying to get everything together because when H-0701 was put in place, essentially it eliminated the entire chapter 36 of the city code. And thus basically, it's not like you could just sit there and say, well, what changed when that went in and what went away? It's just basically, everything went. And then you were supposed to try to figure out what was in there. And so I tried to do that, but that was complicated further because there was no clear notion of what other things were done. So for example, I haven't changed things. I don't know if, my recollection is that the city council did not normally do public hearings on anything having to do with special land uses. And, you know, other types of public hearings, but not for special land uses. So for example, when I ended up preparing the ordinance, I left the Planning Commission doing that. Now, whether or not the Planning Commission exactly did that under the old ordinance is a little unclear because there was also in 2006, a bunch of state law change that basically said, we're revamping the way in which zoning matters are handled throughout the state. So you have some complications here. So if someone says, or if Councilman Wenzel, for example, who I believe was on Planning Commission for some time, says, well, we used to do this, I wouldn't doubt that that was possible. It's just that there's not any sort of good way to put it back together after you've ended up having major changes in everything. And so I focused on the thing that I think led to the impetus for this proposal, which was special land use approvals. And that's what the focus is here. In other words, the focus is from going to having the Planning Commission make a full decision on an application for a special land use, to the Planning Commission making a recommendation after it ends up having a public hearing, and then sending over its findings to the city council with, or its recommendations and the record to the city council, and then the city council making the final approval. All right? So the ordinance that you have in front of you did, or does that. And essentially, it does it by, for example, in section 3622, which is on the first page of the proposed ordinance, adding paragraph five. On section 3623, that starts on the first page of the ordinance and goes on to the second page of the ordinance, changes it from special use approval under paragraph three in parentheses to special use review. And then with respect to section 36512, and you did not get one of these from what was sent to you by the clerk's office, because, you know, for me to find all this stuff, I had to go through literally a stack of documents to basically say, okay, let's try to find everything that's been changed, or something that looks comparable to what has been changed. And essentially, this would be changed by, instead of having on what would be the third page, in paragraph two in parentheses, Planning Commission approval was changed to Planning Commission review. Everything was updated accordingly. There is a paragraph three in parentheses for transmittal of findings to city council, which basically says, okay, city council, we've done the initial legwork on this, now we're going to send it over to you. And then adds in a paragraph four in parentheses, city council final action, adds in a bunch of paragraphs following that. And then ends up also having on the next page, on the fourth page, paragraph six, which says recording of Planning Commission and city council action. Because essentially, when you end up having this kind of decision being made, it's really not a political decision. It is really an administrative, legal type of decision, and it's subject to being challenged before a court. And you essentially have to make a record as if it could end up being challenged. And if you fail to make a record, then that alone can be a basis to vacate the decision and reverse it and remand it back over to either the Planning Commission or to the city council, as the case would be. So that generally runs through what's been changed. And I think there are a few points just to highlight with regard to some of the issues and some of the history on this. Why did it change? And I'm sure Councilman Muscat is going to highlight, like, look, we're the elected people. The buck stops here. We really should make these types of decisions. I don't want to steal his thunder because he will definitely say this, but I wanted to point out just some things because I had spoken to, for example, Mark Roberts about this and how we got to this point in terms of the change. And I was handling a lot of things with city council meetings at that time. And I remember some discussion about this in terms of time being taken at city council meetings. However, I did not change things to have public hearings all handled at city council meetings because that would end up making council meetings even longer. And my sense was that that would not be what was intended. It's more a matter of the decision being made. But the main thing that Mr. Roberts noted was the time in the process to get city approvals. That was what was a real concern. They had businesses that were coming in and saying, hey, we go through your building department, then we end up having to go through your Planning Commission, and then we have to end up going to your city council. This is a lot of approvals. This is a lot of time with a lot of uncertainty. And we just don't want to end up having to go through this much. And if it's that much of a hassle for us, we might just go somewhere else and end up establishing a business in another location. So that was part of what the issue was, that Mr. Roberts remembered coming up as being the impetus for this. And if you look at some of, like, the ordinance book thereafter, what you see is that there are a few things that were changed to try to streamline processes, to make them faster just in general, particularly with regard to some developments. And I mean that just in a general sense, not with respect to necessarily H-0701, but even some things that were done after the fact. And one of the other issues is you need to remember that these, again, are more administrative, legal decisions, subject to legal challenge. And some people might think that an elected body that might say, look, we're subject to people coming up and challenging us, is going to potentially not just follow the legal standards, but is going to make a decision purely based on the politics of the situation. And that was something else that ended up being discussed as the reason for the change, that essentially, you know, someone could come in with a whole bunch of petitions expressing something, but when you look at how these things are supposed to be decided, namely special land uses are supposed to be decided, section 36513 sets forth the standards for granting special land use approval, and it sets forth basically nine factors. And essentially, if you end up having a challenge, you better be able to go through and justify the decision that's made based on each of those nine factors. You can't say, well, someone came in with a petition for 400 or 500 people who oppose this change. That's not going to mean anything to a circuit court judge, and you might find yourself on the end of a very costly lawsuit, not just in terms of fees and things along those lines. You might find yourself in terms of a very costly lawsuit in terms of someone saying you're depriving them of their rights to use their property, and they're going to sue you in a federal civil rights constitutional claim lawsuit. So that was some of the thinking in terms of why the changes were made, some of the things that you may want to look at in terms of your discussions. And it also, I've also laid out specifically the changes that I was able to find. Again, the process would be if your honorable body wanted to go forward with this, then you would refer this proposed ordinance over to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would end up reviewing it, coming up with things, and that frankly might be a good idea. This is the current zoning ordinance, or pretty close to it. Planning consultants may end up having some things that he notes. Some of the Planning Commission members might note some things. Then they end up suggesting tweaks to that potential ordinance. The ordinance can be changed a bit, and then ultimately it comes back to this body to end up having a first reading and then a second reading. And then if it ends up being adopted, it actually has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Dearborn Heights before it becomes effective. We can't just publish it on the website because the Zoning Enabling Act basically has specific requirements. And even under our charter, it makes reference to the idea that if we have to put something in a paper, we have to put something in a paper. We still could put it on the city's website, but we have to do both. So I have nothing further. So any questions?
Council Chair, go ahead. Going back to, you know, city council having the last decisions and everything, I think the, Mr. Roberts saying the time involved, I think that's very mute to me because Planning Commission meets once a month. They meet the week before city council meeting. What's seven days? I mean, and they only meet once a month. So the time issue to me was nothing.
But actually, no, actually, could be problematic.
Well, but they meet, like, again.
Let me tell you what I mean. And maybe the clerk can clarify for us. Because when they meet on Tuesday.
The week before.
A council chair would have to allow, obviously, be added on, yeah. A council chair would have to make an exception because in reality, it is not within.
But if it's in before Wednesday or Thursday to come on, then it's because it's the week before.
Well, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think that it's actually significantly more than that. I mean, you know, in my experience, it is you do the application, then you do the application, you have to end up dealing with the planning consultant. They have to make sure that they've done the application and everything correctly. Then after it ends up being put in, then you have to publish for a public hearing. Then you end up having the public hearing. Then after you end up having the public hearing, you're going to need to end up having recommendations being made. Then those are going to have to be conveyed with essentially what your record is to the city council. Then the city council is going to, and that's not instantaneous. That's not like, that's not like one week.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is the Planning Commission meets once a month. They do all their due diligence, no matter how long it takes them. With the public hearings, the whole nine yards. Once they get all that done, it comes to city council, and it's going to be just a week.
What he's referencing, Gary, is provided the Planning Commission.
Does all the homework.
Is giving approval, subject to, or recommend approval, let's say, subject to, of course, final city council approval. He's saying if they approved it on, and I think they meet on Thursdays.
Yeah, Thursday.
So technically, they won't be able to get on the next council meeting because that means city hall's closed Friday, which means the clerk's office closed on Friday, which means it won't be at the next council meeting. It'll be the meeting after that, which will be about two weeks later. Just side note. But what he's referencing is, I'm sorry, but I'm like.
Well, again, regardless of that, let's go back to the project that's being done on Ford Road right now between John Daly and Inkster Road.
Ricky's had, got his hand up.
Pardon me?
I was just, go ahead, continue.
Between John Daly and Inkster Road. None of that came before city council at all.
Right.
No one knew, nothing was going on.
But it wasn't special land use.
It was.
It was.
It was.
It was.
Home residents. No, 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 it was switched. The zoning was switched. There was no special.
But it was a special land use.
It was a special land use.
Yeah. So, but the point that I'm trying to make is, had, you know, and I already had done my studies on it. And that project should never have been approved the way it was, and thank God we hired a city engineer that looked into that project. So, you know, and, but that's what I'm saying, is it gives us more time to look at things because that could have been a disaster to people that living just south of there with flooding.
Yeah, well, here's the thing. I don't know if Rick Watland is on. I would hope that he would be. I think he can address the timeframes because I know even just getting the minutes to you might take weeks.
I can attest to that.
They actually do, you know, they don't do minutes that are just motion made, seconded, all in favor, you know, or who voted, or recorded vote. They actually do so-and-so said this, so-and-so said this, so-and-so said this. So it is not a, it's not a one-week process. And I think that, you know, Mr. Watland would probably be able to address that because even, for example, this rezoning that was done at the last meeting that your honorable body ended up approving, and the recommendation was to approve from the Planning Commission. You know, that was actually approved or recommended by them. The vote was taken actually, I think, toward the end of September. So.
It was me. It was me. I was in front of Planning Commission in September. You guys didn't have another Planning Commission meeting, so I had to wait for another Planning Commission for those minutes to be approved, for it to come back to this body. So I waited almost four to five months for it.
And that's, that's part of what my point is. If there isn't business, then essentially what ends up happening is there can be delay just associated with that.
But that's more of a Planning Commission issue. That's not even just a city council thing. That's a complete.
Yeah, that's their problem, not this body's problem. Once they, once they do their due diligence, say it takes two weeks to get it on a council agenda to say yea or nay. It's only a week or two.
But it's the developer issue. I mean, using the example of the.
But I mean, if the developer's waited four months, he's not going to wait two more weeks.
But I want you to know, I waited.
I know you.
And it was terrible.
But the only thing is, Ray and others, let's not go to a direction that some other cities have gone without naming specific cities where it got to the point where a lot of people didn't even want to open up businesses in some of these cities because of the bureaucracies involved.
You could have all the business, councilmen. You're always doing this about businesses opening or not opening.
Right.
But when you have problems like we do at the Starbucks right now, and places like the Dairy Queen, and now we have the people, your constituents, calling you up and yelling at you and yelling at me, I don't want to be yelled at for somebody making a decision down that someplace else.
Well, I think, councilman, shouldn't every drive-through come to council?
Pardon me?
Yeah, drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs are supposed to come to council.
So let's.
Well, they haven't.
Well, did that one go in front of you guys?
Yeah, yes, it did.
It did, but I'm just saying, the other ones are not.
I understand it, but that's the one that went in front of you, because I'm just.
But I'm going to, but that's another story in itself because how all that came about, that southernmost driveway was supposed to be utilized, and it wasn't, and it's not now.
Let's let Rick go. Rick, can you go ahead and just give us your opinion on logistics?
I think you guys answered it. It would take two to four months to get to you guys to approve it. You know, that's, that's the biggest issue.
Then why would it take two to four months?
Because if you have a Planning Commission and they approve it, then it has to go, wait for the next Planning Commission. If there isn't one the following month, the minutes don't get approved, and then it goes to the next meeting.
If they don't have a meeting, it's still going to be delayed anyway. So that's up to them to have their meetings.
Correct.
That's up to them to have their meetings.
Wait, I think you got a little confused right there, Rick. So if the Planning Commission approved, you guys meet on Thursdays, correct?
Right.
Okay. So let's use a hypothetical. They met last Thursday and they approved company X to open up. Okay? When could it eventually come in front of us? How long will it take?
Not until we have another Planning Commission meeting, which would be another month.
Why?
Because the minutes have to be approved.
Because before it comes to you guys, the minutes have to be approved.
So you're saying, okay, so you're saying, okay, so you're talking about the Planning Commission's have to approve the minutes before you can bring them to us. Okay, so then that's easily a month or five weeks. And then after that.
Two weeks.
Okay, two weeks. And then after that, it's got to be a time that we have a council meeting to be able to approve it or not approve it.
Council Chair.
Okay, hold on.
It would be almost three months.
Almost three months, okay.
Council Chair.
One second, Gary. I just want to make sure Rick is all set. Rick, you all set? Okay, there you go.
Actually, I want to ask him a question. I want to ask him how long do the minutes normally take to prepare? Because my impression is that, again, you are used to the minutes being done by the clerk's office. The minutes being done by the clerk's office are a lot different, especially when it comes to a special land use. You've got everything that everyone is saying at least being paraphrased. And I'm under the impression that this takes longer. I mean, is it at least a month, Rick? Or is it, I mean, how much time?
It's, it would never make the next council meeting. It would be the next. So that's why I'm saying three months if the Planning Commission had a meeting two months in a row.
Well, I think they better get with the stick then and improve because it just sounds like it's, it's their problem for holding it up. I agree with you on that.
No, it's, it's not their problem. It's more of a building department problem. You know, we charged $500 for a Planning Commission meeting, and it cost us $2,000. So if we don't have anybody doing anything, we don't just have a meat to, you know, pay. It's a losing thing.
Well, can't we do this on recording? This has been a problem that people have been saying about recording these meetings.
No, no. You, councilman, no, you can't. You actually have to end up having people who are going to end up making the decision physically present, and I would assume.
But I'm just saying, as far as the minutes go, because those meetings aren't even recorded.
There's a, there is a secretary there who's taking.
But they're not recording. They're just jotting down notes. To me, that's a problem.
That's even more money.
Pardon?
That's even more money.
To record it, like we do here?
To have a Zoom meeting, Mariano will tell you that it costs a lot to have a Zoom meeting.
Well, I'm not even talking about Zoom meeting, but having it physically recorded.
It's $440 per meeting to have somebody else do the recording.
So if we bought a recorder and just hit play, you mean, you're telling me that's $450 bucks?
Well, no, we are having somebody do it and type.
Well, you know, we're not, we're not, we don't have any vision and thinking here.
Council Chair, when I was on Planning.
Wait, wait, councilman, one at a time. Go ahead, councilman.
Well, just to echo what Counselor Miyaki says, and I understand Ray Muscat's point. And let's take the Dairy Queen or Starbucks. It's the responsibility first of those businesses to either get the proper stacking lanes or the city writes them a ticket and they can't do business. But to try to make the city council the arbitrator of every business while they come to us and then, that's not how the system is designed.
The system was designed that way.
To have the experts do, let's say not, let's say a zoning change or something. Have the experts, the planners, the people with the expertise, look at it and then make a recommendation. Doesn't mean we don't, we still have the final say, but we don't want to get where it's all political. So someone says, oh, you didn't okay that hamburger shop on Ford Road because you own the other hamburger shop or something. It's like, it's exactly like you say. It's designed so that there's specific criteria that has to be met, that has to be looked at.
And if I may, Chief of Staff Hernandez just pointed out, and I believe, you know, and I was there for one Planning Commission meeting and a ZBA meeting to kind of cover these several weeks ago. They actually do record these meetings, physically record them, and then they base the minutes off of those recordings. But the time that's involved to end up putting together the minutes is not inconsiderable. I mean, that, I think, is one of the, one of the issues that is being potentially, I mean, it's not going to be like, it sounds like it's going to be at least two months between the time that the Planning Commission does something and the city council would do something.
Well, we just received the Planning Commission minutes for September and October just a couple days ago.
Sure.
Right.
And we're looking, and we just started the month of April. So somewhere the breakdown is on their part. There's a breakdown somewhere.
I'm going to tell you what's happening here.
So, guys, just make sure you ask so that we do them one at a time. So Councilman Wenzel's next. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was under the impression that they still recorded them. I guess that was proof. Because when I was on the Planning Commission, there was a secretary there that she'd say, okay, wait a minute, let me get the tape going. She had actually a little tape player, and she recorded the message. And I, and I thought that the last Planning Commission meeting I was at, they did record them. So they are recorded already. The minutes are recorded, so.
Well, I've had people ask, is this being recorded? And they said, no.
The meetings are recorded, but those are not the minutes.
Council Chair, go ahead. And you know, and a lot of issues with the applicants, when they say it takes so long and they have to come back, is their own fault. They don't, they're not prepared properly. Just a brief review of what happens, an applicant can come in and I want to, I want to open up a 7-Eleven or something, I present the plans, and our consultant engineer goes over the plans, and they kind of get back and say, hey, you got to do this or this or that to get them ready for Planning Commission. Sometimes they don't get everything they have. And then they get all up in arms if they came unprepared and they have to come back to zoning, or they have to come back for another meeting, that they have to pay this money. So a lot of it falls on the applicants, the time delay, until the Planning Commission has the opportunity to approve something or deny it.
Okay. Gary, then councilman will be doing.
Yeah, and I was just going to point out one other thing in terms of this. You have to realize sometimes with land use issues, you can have multiple issues going on. You go to the Planning Commission, you have a site plan review, they're going to, they're going to end up approving that, but then they're going to end up also having to do a special land use. But then there might be a condition that requires a variance from the ZBA, and all of these things kind of overlap in terms of time. I'm not saying that it could not be done faster than five months. I mean, one of the things when it came to this, this zoning change is, I was looking at it and I was like, why is this here? This was from September. And then I was like, okay, well, yeah, I'm going to make sure I get this thing done for sure so that it's at for the next meeting because if I was the business owner, I would be really rather kind of ticked off that I had waited that long. So, you know, so some of these things are, as Councilman Wenzel has pointed out, yeah, sometimes these applicants come in, they don't really have a site plan, you know, that's adequate, and, or their, you know, their architect did something that was inadequate and should have known better. And then that's their fault. But some of these things are based on just, it takes time to work through some of the elements of this. And again, Mr. Watland would probably be in a better position to address that. And again, I'm not taking any position with respect to this. I just prepared this. I just want to make sure that everyone understands what they're going to potentially have if it goes through this process, especially in terms of how this, this body would function.
But Council Chair. Okay, councilman, one second. We'll be doing this next. Go ahead.
He can go ahead. And, you know, we're talking about five months. It's taken five months, and they're going to get up and go to another city. Well, obviously, we must have to look at that other city if they're going to get something done in two months and figure out a way why we're not streamlining our projects. So, you know, this, to me, this timeframe thing is mind-boggling to me. If other cities can do this in a timely fashion, why can't Dearborn Heights? Is it because we've always done it this way? I don't like this, we've always done it this way thing. It's time to change.
Well, Mr. Watland might be able to address that better than I would, like I said.
And I'm not, I'm not criticizing you. You wrote the ordinance, and I thank you for it. But I'm just saying, the reasons that were given to me just don't make any sense because obviously, our system is broken.
Rick, would, I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility because if money was a factor, just hypothetically, if I'm opening up a business. if I'm opening up a business with me paying, and I'm not crazy about going up to those ranges, but let's say $800 or $1,000, would that expedite things by you being able to hire additional people?
No, it's still gonna be the same. And, and not only that is, I would even have to get everything up for you guys for drawings. Because just by approving it by the minutes, it's kind of hard. You guys would have to get the plans and everything. I would have to supply you guys with the blueprint.
And, and for the purpose of the general audience, Rick, if you don't mind, um, I'm familiar with it, but just for the general audience, what is considered a special land use specifically?
Uh, pretty much anything automotive and, and in certain zones, you know? So like car washes, uh, doctor's offices, stuff like that.
Doctor's office would be considered special land use?
Yep. If, if it's in a special, if it's zoned for that, no. But if it's not zoned, yes.
Right, right, okay, okay. So, Councilman, what you had a question?
Yeah, so I just, you know, like I was stating earlier, man, I'm just gonna tell you guys from my experience. I wanted to go in front of planning, and Rick, tell me if I'm wrong. I wanted to go in front of planning commission. I requested to go in front of planning commission. There was no planning commission that month. And then it came the holidays. And then so I didn't have, wasn't able to go. It was the weirdest experience, so I'm gonna be honest. And I, and I was on council. I think Vince was on there, by the way. And I said to myself, okay, perfect, we got on there. And, and then I called Rick after and said, Rick, well, what's gonna happen? Well, you can't have another, you know, it's not gonna be in front of council until, um, you know, they approve the minutes. And every month I called Rick. Guys, I was, I'm not gonna lie to you. At one point I said, I don't even want to do this anymore. And, and I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not taking it away. But I also want you to know that it's not a city council issue, it's not a Rick Wildon, because Rick does a great job. I think it's more of the planning commission how it's designed. But you have to also keep in mind that if, if, if business X doesn't show up the next month and then we don't have any new business to approve, those minutes are not being approved. So then the business owner like myself is standing here waiting for a new business to, what if a new business didn't come for a whole year?
The system's broken.
It's a broken system.
But there's also another additional issue that I want to point out. Now, I can tell you as a Realtor. So somebody purchases a building and they put on there what they call due diligence. So they'll pull it like, you know, somebody's buying building X and they'll buy it with condition that they want to make sure obviously they're gonna be approved for opening up, uh, oh, let's use it a basketball court type of place, right? Okay? So, but then there's gonna be due diligence. Well, the, the challenge that you've got is when they're buying that building, no property owner is gonna wait five months for them to be approved or not approved.
But that's a planning, it's, it seems like we have an issue with the planning commission and how it's designed and how it's operating.
Okay, so then let's ask Rick specifically. Rick, is there something that can be done either on your end or maybe from the city's end as far as administrative part to, to make this, uh, process much faster? Because if there's not, I'll tell you, I personally would not be in favor of this.
Well, I'm not, but before we ask Rick that question, I, I just want.
There is, there is a way to do it, that, that there, no matter what, the planning commission has to meet every month.
Yeah, they don't meet every month, that's what they force to.
So was them not meeting every month? Was that primarily due to the COVID situation or was it the holiday situation or was that common?
No, it was more that there was no, nothing for them to do.
There's no new businesses opening up.
Yeah, there's no new business, no need to approve, stuff like that.
They wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to do a special meeting. I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if Gary can answer this via Zoom, let's say.
I'm sorry?
They wouldn't have been able to do like, if you, if, if Rick is saying there was nothing for the planning commission to vote on, therefore they didn't do a meeting. But the problem is if somebody's trying to open up a business and they're doing a meeting now, delays of another additional 30 or 60 days. Can they do like a special Zoom meeting during that particular month or?
No, the, the, the body has to actually meet, just like all of you have to be present.
They have to be in person.
You have to end up, the, the, the people who are making the decision have to meet in person. That's why your procedures are the way they are for our type of hybrid meeting. Members of the council have to be present. You know, I don't have to be present. The city clerk doesn't need to be present. Mr. Watland doesn't have to be present. But you, as decision makers, as members of the body, have to be physically present because of where we are right now under the open meetings act.
Where the cost comes from, all the costs.
Counselor Chair.
Where the cost come from?
Go ahead. No, go ahead, uh.
Great, go ahead. Well, I'd just like to ask Rick, where does this $2,000, where's all this money go?
Well, you, you have, you have to do a mail out of 300 feet all the way around the job site. And then each member gets $50. Uh, then you have the attorney's fees. You have the recording secretary's wage, and there you go.
Well, well, if they were just to come in and approve the minutes, you'd have to have all of that stuff? Even to approve the minutes, you still have to send out another letter? Once you've already sent out the original letter?
Just, just the first time. But that, that's where I'm saying is, the next time to do just his, you know, like, um, Mr. Baydun's minutes, just to have them meet, it would cost us around $1,600.
Yeah, because to me, i- i- if they've already done all that legwork and all they're gonna do is show up and say, we approved the minutes from, from the last meeting, your costs aren't gonna be that high.
They get paid more than us.
Okay. And they get a lot more done.
Still the same amount. It's still the same amount, except the mailing out.
Okay, Gary said.
Yeah, two, two, two points on that. You also have a planning consultant. And sometimes these minute issues can end up being really important, particularly if you are not sure what's in, in there. So for example, this last thing at, um, on Ford Road, there was a question that was posed to me about whether or not Mr. Calidrakis should be present for that meeting. And I said, yes, he should be present for that meeting because if the minutes aren't right, it can make a difference if someone was to end up challenging the decision. We need to make sure that the minutes are being reviewed by the lawyer. And if there's gonna be some change proposed, then you need to have the planning consultant there as well. So you've got professional staff that are gonna be at that meeting and need to be at that meeting regardless.
You would think they'd, they'd already have done that review those, uh, those minutes before they get to the meeting. Well, just like we do.
Yeah, but it, it, you do, but notice how many kind of audibles that I end up running for you from where I'm sitting with regard to motions and things along those lines.
Something's broken.
Okay.
But, 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 but there is one other point, if I could. There was a question about what is a special land use? And I just want to quickly read section 3651 about intent, special land uses. The procedures and standards in this section are intended to provide a consistent and uniform method for review of proposed plans for special land uses. Special land uses are uses either public or private which possess unique characteristics and therefore cannot be properly classified as a permitted use in a particular zoning district. This section contains standards for review of each special land use proposal individually on its own merits to determine if it is an appropriate use for the district and a specific location where it is proposed. So that's what a special land use is. It's not quite something that fits into the particular district and that needs to be looked at more closely to make sure there's a fit for that particular parcel and that particular project in that type of district.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, go ahead.
Well, again, just to echo what Mr. Miyaki is saying. So in other cities, I used to represent, for example, a billboard, a company that put up billboards. 99 out of 100 times, it's if, if you don't get all your stuff in or you don't have this or that, then you don't get approved. But it's, it's the, what takes the time is, is, it's just like you say, let's call him the, the developer, getting everything in. And then if, in other cities, if I want to be on the planning commission agenda, if I get my stuff in, if I'm the only thing on there, they have the meeting, assuming everyone can be there. And I'll give you an example is, uh, and they do, is in city of Dearborn.
Okay. Counselor Chair, just a quick question for Mr. Watland. How many special use do we have a year? Like, do, do we get a year? Any idea?
Probably three or four.
Three or four a year?
Yep. But, you know, just, just for a hit, uh, Ray's answer is we've already sped that up because now every person that comes in, we set them up with wage trim. So the first time that they go to the planning commission, we know that everything is on that plan. So it, it tries not to go to the second, third, fourth. So that's to speed it up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the council members? All right, hearing none. Anybody from the audience have any comments on this? Well, you, you have to come up to the podium if you don't mind.
He wants to know why we're charging so little.
Drapkowski, Columbia Street. Why are we charging such a little fee for this planning commission or these special land uses? What are other cities charging? What, what was it, Rick? How much?
2,000.
2,000.
$2,000.
Rick's saying it costs us approximately $2,000.
It cost us. Why is it costing us?
Well, I, my own personal answer is why I like this that way, but go ahead.
I mean, they want to come to our city or use our land or whatever. You know, we shouldn't be going into debt for somebody else.
No, but if we want businesses to come in, we can't.
I understand that, but there's a lot of other businesses that can pay that.
Okay, Rick, go ahead.
It, it's ridiculous.
Wait, can somebody unmute Rick, please? There we go, go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's always been $500. It's, I had nothing to do with that part. I mean, it should go higher.
But, but. Okay, go through the Counselor Chair. I'll make sure we do this.
$500 for this meeting and they're paying their lawyers how much an hour? Come on.
Okay, but at the same time, keep in mind, even at the $500, I personally hear it from a lot of people that apply for these, that's ridiculous. They're gonna pay $500 for something that's even a maybe. So what you don't want to do is discourage businesses from opening up. Just before this, we had the, you know, Van, Van Born overlay. And what I want, what you want, what each and every one of us here on the council and the mayor wants is a lot of businesses to open up on Van Born to get that area revitalized.
Understand it.
If you have it where they have to go in front of the planning commission and you have a fee of, let's use this, in this case, $2,000, I can tell you, seven out of 10 businesses, unless they're big corporate businesses, probably wouldn't even apply.
How much are other cities charging?
Plus you're making it back on the building.
How much are other cities charging?
Sorry, what were you saying?
500 bucks?
You make, you make that back up on the building permits. You know, once, once, once a building's approved, you make that, some of that money back on the building permits and electrical permits. So, I mean, it kind of comes back into the building.
You're talking about as a city, we get that money back?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I still think the price is too low.
Okay, Rick? I don't know if you heard him, okay, good. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, anybody, uh, stand, anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? All right, hearing nothing else. Uh, the next step, if you don't mind, Gary, just give us the next step. Is it just voting on this at a council meeting or what is the next step?
Yeah, the next step would be to, uh, bring this back, uh, to, uh, the council at a meeting and, uh, either vote that you want to refer the proposed, uh, ordinance to the planning commission for review or to, uh, vote that you don't want.
So how do we do that? Do you bring that forward?
No, I mean, it could just be put on the agenda. What I submit, it could be put on, on the agenda.
So can we have that put on?
Well, you're talking about for review for us? You're talking about for the planning commission to review this, right? Or are you talking about us?
Right, the next step would be for it to be on your agenda and then for you to have a formal vote whether or not to refer it to the planning commission for their review or not to refer it over to the planning commission for their.
You're talking about any decision specifically?
No, they're, they don't make the decision.
Right, right, right. I just finally, I want to make sure.
It goes, it goes to the, the next step would be it goes to the planning commission. They end up doing a review with regard to the proposed ordinance.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
They consider what might be good to add to it, makes recommendations and suggestions, and then send it back to the council for a recommendation. And then the council makes the final decision and final changes to it. You know, first and second reading.
Yeah, so it's actually my personal preference. Yeah, I definitely want to go to the planning commission to get their input.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to follow the rules, just have it sent to them and then we'll go from there.
You said we'd have to vote on that, send it to the planning commission?
Yes, you should vote on it and, and, and take a formal action with regard to that. And again, remember, if you're going to end up referring it over, it, it should be done with the idea that ultimately you're going to intend to approve whatever it is that ultimately ends up being done. I, I mean, my sense would be just having, sending it over to them, just kind of like a review. The idea is, you know, you send it over with review with the idea that ultimately you're intending to approve the ordinance once it ends up.
So out of curiosity, why would we have to vote to send it to them to review? Why couldn't we just send it to them to review and then let's know what recommendations they make?
Because you are the city council and you take actions formally through your votes. As opposed to, I don't know, council chair electing to choose to start a lawsuit without getting a vote of the council, for example.
I remember that. I remembered.
Just, just, just a hypothetical.
Right, 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 I got you. Not me, I understand.
You're pouring salt in the wound now, okay?
Full disclosure, it wasn't me. Anyways, uh, Counselor Baydun and Counselor Wenzel.
My quick question is, clearly this, I think most of us here can agree that there's an issue with the planning commission. I hate the way we have to wait for minutes to be approved. Can you maybe help us look at different municipalities and see what they're doing so that maybe we can, you know? I, I don't want to see business owners have to jump through so many hoops. And I also don't want to, you know, have other businesses to wait through that, that I waited through, right? But I'd also like the city council to know, like if, what's happening on Ford Road should have came to council. Council should have known what's happening. But unfortunately, it wasn't, and, you know, that's then, this is now. But could it have the situation been, uh, that there was so much time before it was, the minutes were approved that at this point, everybody forgot? We don't know. We don't know what happened there.
Everybody forgot, wasn't, we weren't told.
That's the responsibility of the business.
We weren't told what happened on Ford Road.
No, we didn't know.
Okay, well, as far as the minutes go and having to wait for another meeting to, can we look into something on that?
Well, uh, uh, let's, let's talk about in terms of that. Certainly can be looked into. My recommendation would be, it would be someone who deals with multiple communities. Maybe our planning consultant ends up dealing with multiple communities and could say, look, this is what they do in Canton, this is what they do in Dearborn Heights, this is what they do in Westland. And then you potentially have someone who's already knowledgeable about those issues. I don't know that you would want to pay me, for example, to end up saying, hey, what do you do here? When someone already might have access to that information off the top of their head. But I'll do it if you, if, if I get direction, do it.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll find somebody on there. Okay, thank you, Gary. Uh, Counselor Wenzel.
Yeah, nothing to do with this, but I just wanted to acknowledge that today is National Library Workers Day. And my, big, big shout out to all our library workers in Dearborn Heights, keep up the good work.